Okay. There he is, Attorney Florrick. The Stratford Zoning Commission is now open for public hearing for those petitions advertised to be heard at this session. Let it be noted that for the record that Mr. Raguskas is sitting in for Commissioner Pepin and John Ratusky is sitting in for Planning Administrator Jay Habanski. And I'm sitting in for Chairwoman Stephanie Phillips. My name is Mark Giuliano. I wish to announce that should any items on tonight's agenda take more time than anticipated, this public hearing may conclude at 11:00 PM and be continued to another date which will be established at that time. Any items not heard by 11:00 PM tonight will be heard and continued to the public hearing. Also, we started at 7:01. For the record, the petitions to be heard this evening were advertised in the Connecticut Post on July 12th, 2017, and July 19th, 2017. These properties were duly posted on July 19th, 2017. So with that being said, I would like a commissioner to make a motion to move forward. I would like to take an agenda out of order. I would like to put four, five, and six first, and then do seven, and then go back to three. So if I can get a motion from anybody?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Okay, moved by Mr. Fuller, seconded by Mr. Raguskas. And the petitioner, I do believe, is present, and he has already stepped forward, and he can give his name and address, and submit if there's any certificates or mailings, and carry on.
Point of order, Mr. Chair, we just need to read the petition into...
Oh, who would like to read the petition first, all three?
I guess I accidentally volunteered myself.
Okay, yep, I forgot. Moved too fast. Yeah, I lumped all three together.
Okay, so I'll take all three in a tripliket motion. So the application of 2501 Main Street TD Vietnam Palace LLC is approved, established full-service restaurant in an LB zone, a text amendment for TD Vietnam Palace, amendment to Section 6.1.2 to a full-service takeout restaurant in an LB zone, and then the third one, 2501 Main Street TD Vietnam Palace LLC approval of a Class H restaurant beer and wine permit in an LB zone.
Good evening, Madam Secretary, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission, Mr. Rosowski. My name is Barry Knott. I'm a lawyer with the firm of Knott, Knott &amp; Dunn with offices at 1656 Main Street, and I'm here this evening on behalf of TD Vietnam Palace LLC, the members of which are Thomas Nian and his wife Gina Nian of 83 Boothill Road, Trumbull, Connecticut. At this time, I'd like to submit the certificates of mailing and make reference to a folder of exhibits I have just handed to each of you, to which I'll be making reference during the course of my presentation. The first two of which are Exhibits 1 and 2, they are photos of the Station House Square Shopping Center. First one is taken across the street from the train station, and the second one is the photo of the specific location within the shopping center that this application relates to, which is the last rental unit down on the right-hand side where the Station House Restaurant used to be, and it's got that train caboose located adjacent to it. So Exhibit 2 is a photo of that location. That's where we're talking about. And that had been a breakfast and lunch-type restaurant for decades operated by a number of different people over the years. This application, as indicated, is an application for amendment to Section 6.2.1 of the zoning regulations and a special case approval to establish a full-service restaurant in a civic center zone, which is where this property is located, LB Civic Center, as well as approval of location for a Class H restaurant beer and wine permit. My client had operated a restaurant known as the Vietnam Palace at the Dock Shopping Center from September of 2012 through October of 2016 when he lost his lease at the Dock because of the advent of the new Chinese buffet restaurant that's going in over at the Dock. It's currently under construction now, and the location of that restaurant encroaches into the space that my client used to have at the Dock, so he lost his lease as a result of that. Because my client's restaurant at the Dock had been successful, he wished to stay in Stratford and then went about searching for another location, which he found in this shopping center. Unfortunately, when we reviewed the site details in anticipation of applying for these permits, we realized that restaurants are not a permitted use in the civic center zone. Now, there's four or five restaurants in that shopping center. How they got there is beyond me, but they are not permitted used.
I'll tell you, Barry. They were in there by waiver of uses. I guess the Commission, every time a restaurant went in there, they did a waiver of use.
Okay, it's part of the special case application.
Instead of going back and correcting the regulations, they simply used that mechanism.
Well, I mean, I was flabbergasted when I saw that the restaurants were not permitted. Jay was as well, John was as well, and we realized that we needed to amend the regulation to allow restaurants in a civic center zone. So my zone text amendment simply adds, "Full-service restaurants and takeout restaurants are now permitted uses in an LB zone." So that solves that problem. Exhibit 3 is the site plan of the shopping center. I've highlighted in yellow the space all the way down on the right, which I've shown you in photo number 2. Exhibit 4 is a letter from the Planning Commission in which they indicate that it reached a favorable recommendation regarding the proposed text amendment and believe that what we are proposing to add restaurants to a civic center permitted uses is appropriate. Exhibit 5 is a copy of my client's menu from their old restaurant at the Dock, and they're going to be using the same menu at the new location. It was successful at the Dock, it will be successful here. My client will operate this new facility with five employees, which will include the husband and wife that own the business, as well as three other employees. It'll be the same menu as I indicated, although we were asking for beer and wine here, didn't have beer and wine over at the Dock, but we are asking for beer and wine approval here. The hours of operation will be from 11:00 AM to 10:00 PM, seven days a week. The area that is the caboose, the train out there, in the past had been used by previous restaurant operators as part of the restaurant. My people are not going to do that, they're going to use that as the office and storage space. As far as the administrative comments are concerned, Mary Dean, the Director of Economic Development stated in her letter to you dated July 7th, "Economic development strongly supports the proposed zone text amendment to Section 6.2.1. The proposed text will enable occupancies such as restaurants to open a business within the LB zone, Stratford Center, allowing restaurants into the downtown area without having the petition would ease the process for new businesses coming into our downtown area and will improve foot traffic within the train station area. The amendment also supports complete streets, TOD, as well as a plan of conservation of developments' goals to revitalize Stratford's town center, increasing the town's tax base." In his comments regarding the proposed zone text amendment, Jay wrote, "The proposed text amendment should be considered for approval for the following reasons. One, allowing for activated ground force space such as full-service and takeout restaurants within the LB zone are the exact type of uses and developments at the center which should be considered as appropriate by this commission. The uses promote walkability, pedestrian activity, and establishing a vibrant urban form that is desirable when revitalizing a downtown." The proposed permitted uses align with the overall vision concept that other long-range planning programs promote, and the proposed amendment now allows for the LB baseline to reinforce those uses." Jay then goes on to explain in detail how the proposed text amendment is consistent with the town plan of development. So it is consistent with the town plan of development, it will be a permitted use in the zone, under the zone text amendment that I am asking for. And with respect to the special case application and the application for approval of restaurant beer and wine, Jay says, "Assuming that the text amendment allowing the full-service takeout restaurant has been approved," that's the one I submitted, "the proposed use would be permitted in an LB zone. Allowing for activated ground force space such as the proposed full-service restaurant is a type of use that Stratford Center needs. These uses promote walkability, pedestrian activity, and establish a vibrant urban form that is desirable when revitalizing a downtown. They also offer new dining nightlife options that downtown need to thrive. In addition, a restaurant beer and wine permit is permitted in an LB zone." That's the funny thing, if you look at the current zoning regulations, restaurants are not permitted in an LB zone, but a restaurant beer and wine license is permitted in a LB zone. "In order for businesses to remain competitive, the ability to serve alcohol with meals completes the dine-out experience. This office has no issues with the proposed restaurant and incidental beer and wine permit." So I'm not going to make a federal case out of this application, I think it speaks for itself. I would note that the zone text amendment only requires three affirmative votes. The special case and approval of location applications require four votes. There's only four commissioners here tonight. If you all see fit to vote yes, then be my guest and approve it tonight. If it turns out that somebody's got a problem with it and we're only going to get three votes, three affirmative votes, I would ask that you table it to allow a fifth commissioner to listen to the tape, and it could be acted on at next month's meeting. But if everybody's good with it, I'm more than happy to receive approval this evening. Thank you.
Attorney Florrick?
Yes, for the record, Attorney Knott and I have discussed this before, I don't think it's proper to adopt the suggestion that he just made. I think that if he elects to go forward today, the petition stands or falls with the four members here as opposed to getting two bites at an apple.
Well, he's right, we don't agree on that. I mean, it is certainly proper for a petition to be tabled. You would agree with that, John, right?
I do.
And it would be proper, by the time it's voted on, for a fifth commissioner to listen to the tape.
I agree with that, too.
And that commissioner, even though he's not here tonight, would be able to vote on it, right?
Except that the way you've premised it is, you know, if all of you are going to vote for it, but, you know, if there's a little question, then I want it tabled, I don't think that's proper. I think that, as I said, do you want to go forward tonight with four commissioners here? Fine.
I do.
Okay.
All right. With that being said, is there any questions right now from any of the commissioners? Mr. Fuller?
Thank you, Chairman Giuliano. Mr. Knott, I noticed you mentioned that the hours would be 11 to 10.
10 to 11. No, 11 to 10.
11 to 10. Does the petitioner have any plans in the future to change it till maybe 11 o'clock at a closing time, or they're pretty solid on going till 11 to 10?
Yeah. We're prepared to stipulate to those hours.
I'm definitely see that this is consistent with the planning, conservation, and development. It's also consistent to the use that's already happening at that shopping center. I do appreciate a text amendment coming forward to kind of square the rules, if you will, and clean the ledger. That's one way to fix the zoning book, because sometimes BZA will give a variance here, zoning commission for special case will give a permit there or a special case there, so why not simplify things? Why not have a consistent rule across the board instead of a variance for this location but that location? I think that's incumbent upon the planning and zoning commissions to take a look at that, and it takes real-world scenarios and real-world cases to kind of highlight those sorts of situations. We saw some of the absurdity with the rule, where you could have a Class H permit but not an actual establishment to host or hold such a permit. My other question, would the petitioner also be looking in the future, and if they don't know, that's perfectly okay, if they're looking to go with another sort of liquor permit, say something that would allow spirits?
I do have the answer to that question. I asked them that question, as a matter of fact, and the answer is absolutely not. Beer and wine can be served to patrons without needing to hire a bartender. They don't intend, they have no bar, and they're not going to hire a bartender. Soon as you've got somebody asking for a whiskey sour, you need a bartender. With beer and wine, you don't need a bartender, so they have no plans of ever hiring a bartender.
I also imagine with the State Department of Consumer Protection and DRS, Department of Revenue Services, different permits also trigger different sorts of regulations and oversights as well. That's pretty much all the questions I have, and also this place was used as a restaurant in the past as well.
Probably for 30 or 35 years.
I don't have any other questions, I think this is, you know, one way to really kind of just square up the books.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Fuller. Mr. Paul?
Good evening, thank you for that great presentation. It looks and sounds like something that the town of Stratford needs as far as walkable businesses. I just have one question, they've been in operation for 30 years at their previous location, any problems at all?
No, no, in the Dock Shopping Center, they were only open for five years.
Okay.
This space has been occupied as a restaurant for 30 or 35 years.
Okay. My question is regarding their previous location, was there ever any problems with the business at that location?
Well, I can tell you that in addition to representing these people, I also represent Erstad Biddle Properties that owns the Dock Shopping Center, and I am familiar with the advent of the new Chinese buffet that's coming over into where this guy used to be at the Dock, and I am not aware of any problems that the Erstad Biddle people, my clients, ever had with these people, also my clients.
Okay, thank you very much, that was a good presentation, and it sounds like, again, I think it's a good piece of business for the town of Stratford.
And for the record, this is the shortest zoning presentation I've ever made in 42 years.
That'll be noted. Mr. Raguskas, any questions?
I don't really have any questions, I would like to thank you for that shortest presentation, that's appreciated. It seems to me like a win-win, we're going to clean up the antiquated zoning regulations, get them a little bit more logical, and put a business that people can walk to from the train, so I don't have anything that I see as an issue.
Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Knott.
Thank you.
Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of this petition? Anyone to speak in favor of this petition? Okay. Anyone wish to speak of opposition of this petition? Anyone want to speak of opposition of this petition? Okay, hearing that there is none, I need to move forward in a motion in order to close this by Commissioner...
Mr. Chair, I just have one last question before I make a motion to close.
Absolutely.
Attorney Knott, to your knowledge, with the Vietnam Palace not in the Dock right now, and therefore not really in operation right now, is there any other Vietnamese restaurant or eatery in the town of Stratford currently?
I'm not aware of one. I am not aware of one. The only Vietnam restaurant I ever went to was in Fort Lauderdale, actually, and I had never been to one before, it was last year, and I was pleasantly surprised with the food, to be honest with you. But I'm not aware of one in Stratford.
So it would be safe to say that if this is approved by this commission, it also diversify kind of the food culture in the town, too, and help Stratford become more of a various food destination.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I don't know if there's any other...
I'm good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Knott, Attorney Knott. Okay, so...
I'll make a motion to close this petition unless anyone has any last minute questions.
I'm good.
If not, I'll put the motion to close.
Seconded by Mr. Raguskas, put forward by Mr. Fuller. Okay. Okay, so now we'll move forward to the next one on the agenda.
Mr. Chair, we should probably take a vote on the motion.
Oh, okay. Yep.
Make sure it's all by the book.
All right, let's make a vote on the motion to close this.
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Paul?
Aye.
Aye, me, too, aye. Passes favorably four. Okay, let's move on to the next one on the agenda. Would you mind reading that, Mr. Raguskas?
Okay, which one are we going?
Seven.
14 Beach Drive by Neil O'Neill to modify existing approvals to allow for live music to be played on outdoor patio in a RS4 zone.
Okay. Is there an applicant here for this? Nobody's, no applicant here?
Mr. Chair...
Mr. Chairman, you may want to pass it, he was kind of low on the agenda and may have figured that he was going to be taking a blast.
We could address the text amendment, and then if Representative is here...
All right, we'll pass that, so do I need to motion that back out and close it and then reopen it, right? Nobody just read it.
Where did you leave it, Gail? Where was it left?
Commissioner Raguskas read it into record for hearing, the address would be Beach Drive, but there's no testimony yet.
Well, why not just pass it until later on in the agenda? That's all.
I'll make a motion to pass, just in case you need a formal...
Just make a motion, then, somebody make a motion to pass it, and we'll do it after. Mr. Paul, seconded by Steve Raguskas. All right, Mr. Paul, in favor?
Aye.
Aye, passes unanimously four. Okay, let's, Mr. Paul, you want to read number three, the text amendment?
Text amendment, petition of Stratford Zoning Commission to amend 1.13 and 3.29 regarding full-service and takeout restaurants, rather.
Okay, this is basically in-house with us, so it'd be a discussion between us on this. We've been discussing this for, what, maybe the last couple of sessions on this, and I think there was a comment left for that approval, to move it either to, what, approval by the zoning administrator or approval by zoning commission? So with that being said, Mr. Fuller?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I remember we referred it to the Planning Commission, the Planning Commission has since made a favorable recommendation with a couple of stipulations, and we talked about the same stipulations on the zoning commission's side, about the, I guess, nine seats being the maximum to it, so I think that's consistent to what the discussion's been going on. And also, I remember another critical element was that zoning staff also had the out of referring something back to the commission, should they feel that a particular property is a little more sensitive or might require a deeper review, so I think both the planning and zoning commissions did a lot of thorough work on this subject, as well as planning and zoning staff, economic development, and town legal office, particularly Florrick and Florrick. So I don't see any more of it and opening up to the public after we have our little discussion with it. I think it makes sense, because these are very small sorts of businesses, why overburden them with surveys and petitions and the work?
It's a big expense for the last two ice cream shops that came in, they had, you know, modify survey, pay the application cost, and they're very small businesses, so it was a real burden for them to apply for that.
Mr. Paul?
Mr. Chair, we have to do the prudent thing in helping small businesses who tend to struggle in the town of Stratford, so this would go along that way in helping them do their job a lot easier with a lot less red tape.
Do you have anything, Mr. Raguskas?
Well, I just think that we should look at the three recommendations. As Commissioner Fuller said, we've talked about a lot of these before, but especially having, instead of adjacent, to have a 100-foot radius, because adjacent means different things to different people, and the nine seats are less, and one trash receptacle for every nine seats, so I think we should make sure to put all three of those in there.
Yeah, I'm in agreement with what everybody else is saying here, and I'm just not sure where we should go, if you want to approve it by the zoning administrator or just have it go to the commission.
What you can do, if you don't want just administrator, just do an administrative type of review, where they don't technically need to survey, but they just come before the board with, you know, an adequate plot plan, and the commission could do it administratively.
Just to...
Go ahead, Mr. Fuller.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, just to corroborate what the zoning enforcement officer just presented to us, we have a couple of other small stuff that ends up on the administrative vote, so sometimes it's in-law or accessory apartments, or sometimes certain, like carnivals and fairs will go on the administrative vote, so that's another out, too, so I think, depending on, it really comes down to your philosophy, do you want elected officials to take a look at it, or do you want zoning staff to take a look at it? I think really you want both in most cases to have it, because you have both professionals and elected officials taking a look at it. I think if you feel comfortable with having staff make a judgment first, I think if it feels that it should go back up to the commission, it should go back up to the commission in an administrative review capacity to save them the burden of the full surveys and petitions of notice and hiring a full-blown attorney, and there's a lot of, there's thousands of dollars that goes into it, not just the fees to the town, but getting the professionals involved for the presentation. There's a lot here that, probably the public's not really aware of, like, all the expenses that go into business development, and even when you're elected to some of these land use boards, you just don't see all the costs right up front, and this is one way to kind of burden that, so I'm comfortable either way to have it go straight to the administrative review, or to have staff look at it, or then to refer it to administrative review, I'm comfortable either way.
Yeah, so am I, and nobody, we don't have any more to say about that, we could just move this along to admin, no? And just make our decision right then and there.
We should open up to public testimony at some point, just to see...
Right, and just saying that, I mean, we've been talking about this for the last, maybe, two or three meetings, and we finally have it down to these couple of items, and I think it's good either way. All right, is anybody in the audience, anybody want to come up forward and talk about this restaurant takeout text amendment? Anybody in the audience want to talk about the text amendment takeout? Anybody oppose? Anybody oppose? All right, maybe we can make a motion to close this?
Anybody want to stab at it, or? I'll make a motion to close the text amendment presented by the zoning commission.
And seconded by Steve Raguskas, Mr. Raguskas, okay. What are we doing all of this, no kidding?
I don't know if you could leave the public hearing open and discuss the other item. Could you do that, John? Just give him more time?
What was the question?
The question is, could we leave the public hearing open in a way so that in case that, the number 14 or seven shows up, we could go back to that? Or could we reopen the public hearing afterwards? Why couldn't we just reopen the public hearing?
You want to go straight to administrative session, is that what you want to do?
Because the fellow's not here, and we're going to be sitting, waiting for him, he may never come up.
No, I mean, you're definitely not going to wait all night for him, so, yeah, I think that what you could do is you could close the public hearing with the caveat that if he does come, it will be reopened, and in the meantime, you will continue on to his administrative session.
I have a question for Attorney Florrick.
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Attorney Florrick, is it possible we can make a motion to continue the hearing for Beach Drive, and if they were to show up sometime tonight, could we, because it's technically after the start time of the public hearing?
You can actually do that, too, if you wanted to, I think you...
In the event they happen to stop by?
You can continue it, subject again to the caveat that if he shows up, you'll hear it tonight.
Okay, that answers my question, a question to the Chair. I don't think we've taken a formal vote to close the public hearing for the Stratford Zoning Commission text amendment first, so I would recommend that we do that and then make a motion on the Beach Drive continuance.
All right, can I get a motion to close the text amendment for...
Actually, I think we do have a motion on the floor, we just need to take the vote.
All right, let's take a vote on that then. All in favor?
Oh, here he is now.
Here he is now.
Okay, perfect.
All right, so that closes the text amendment. All in favor for that, it was anonymous. Yeah, now we can go to Beach Drive. Do we, we need to open that up again and re-say that?
We didn't close it.
We didn't close it? You didn't close it?
Didn't close it? All right, so, uh, going to Peach Drive is, uh, the applicant present here? Mind stepping forward, sir? Thank you.
I don't think we need to read that in anymore, because we never closed it.
Is this a copy of the letter that went up? Do I get that?
Must have to write, hmm.
I have the originals here as well.
Yeah, and can you state your name and address, please?
Uh, my name is Nile O'Neil, uh, 580 Glenwood Drive, Orange, Connecticut.
Mr. Chair, there's no original stamps on this.
Sorry.
We should ask the town attorney. Yeah. I'm not sure what constitutes as a formal document. It do happen to address.
Do we need to have a copy of the letter that was sent to them to, uh?
There's a copy of the letter.
Oh, there we go. That might, that might-
There's a picture of it right here.
Well, the reason I'm here is, um, we have a bar restaurant at Fourteen Beach Drive, which was previously Maribel's.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, we opened it up on May sixteenth as the Krabby Dog Tavern. It's a family-oriented restaurant, um, it's usually, we thought we'd be open later, but we're usually closed by 11:00 PM. That's the way it's working out down there now. So, uh, I was playing music on the patio through, uh, two speakers, and I wasn't aware that I wasn't allowed, to be honest. So when I got the, I got a call from the economic development officer to say, you know, you have to go through zoning, so I came up and done the paperwork, and that's why I'm here. Um, I am aware that we're not allowed to have music after 10:00 PM in the evening, as, um, I think it's, I'm not very good at, but, chapter 142 of the Stratford Town Code, Section 6B2 prohibits nice activities playing of any radio or musical instruments in such a matter to an ear disturbed quite of persons during the hours of 10:00 PM to 7:00 AM. But we, so what I'm looking for is, uh, approval to play music on the patio, like, sometimes on a Sunday from 2:00 to 4:00, or maybe on a Friday night from 6:00 to 8:00, but we always will have music stopped by 10:00 PM. That's, that's a guaran, that's a given, a guarantee. Um, so it's just basically an approval to play music on the patio. The patio seats about, I think, 24 to 30 people. Um, that, that was approved by the fire marshal, and he went down, had a look, so it's basically a very family-oriented restaurant. I don't know if any were down there, but it's like, it's not like we have a rock band there. It's a two-piece kind of clips-on-music on a Sunday afternoon. So, I think it's an addition to the area, it's a family restaurant, we encourage kids and families, you know, it's not like we have pumping out DJs and we have college kids drunk and throwing bottles around. I would get it. I wouldn't want music there and I wouldn't want to live there, but we're not that kind of place, so, you know, I know it's kind of hard if you haven't been there to, but that's the kind of restaurant it is, so. And basically, since we opened, we have approval, like, from the liquor department to stay open until 1:30, but we have found ourselves just closing at 11:00 PM, because by about 8:30 is our last, we see people coming for food, and by 9:30, 10 o'clock, you might have a couple of people finishing a drink or a glass of wine, by 11 o'clock, there's nobody in the restaurant. So we, we just close, to be honest. So, I don't know if you have any questions for me, or can I answer anything?
Okay, does, uh, anybody have any, uh, questions for the petitioner? Mr. Fuller?
Uh, yes, uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I have a couple of questions. Uh, what sort of music, are, are you playing mostly acoustic with the amplifiers? What sort of?
Well, we have two speakers underneath, are about six, eight feet off the ground, that play like easy-listening music pretty low-key as an ongoing restaurant music. Um, if you stand, if you were to stand 15 feet away from the deck, you won't really hear it. So I don't think that is the issue. I think the issue is when we have a two-piece band on a Sunday afternoon. And to answer your question, do they be amplified? It's a two-piece band, like, a guitar, maybe a guy on bongos, and I think the guitar would be amplified, would be my answer, I, I'm nearly sure, because he does have a microphone, so it would be amplification.
Obviously, the microphone would be amplified.
Yeah, so there's an ampli, of some kind, but it's not like, like, um, I wish I should have brought a video or something of them playing, and you'd be able to see, it's not like a big loud, you know what I mean?
Yeah, what I'm trying to get is, like, electric guitars, electric bass, sympathizers, big percussion, not like bongo percussion, but like-
No.
You know, I'm thinking Aerosmith and AC/DC.
No, it's only a two-piece band. We don't have room for anything else, so it's like two guys, so they can't make that much noise, to be honest.
And, um, what are the hours you were proposing again? Just for public record?
Well, according, I think, to Lordship rules or regulations, there's no music after 10:00 PM, so we can guarantee that there will be no music after 10:00 PM. Uh, most of our music is on a Sunday afternoon from like, maybe 2:00 to 4:00 or 4:00 to 6:00, weather permitting, obviously, and then the other times, we either have music on a Friday or a Saturday. We generally don't have it on both, and if it's on a Friday or Saturday night, it's usually 7:00 to 9:00 or 6:00 to 8:00, but gen, never any later than 10 o'clock.
And my final question, if you don't know this, that's perfectly okay. Do you know if Marnix has any sort of munit, uh, music, your neighbor, neighboring restaurant?
I do know to have speakers, like, you can hear music, but just easy listening.
Yeah.
I haven't seen a live band there. No, I have not.
Okay, um, I'm, I'm all set with questions, Mr. Chair.
Anybody else have any more questions? Mr. Paul?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, the speakers you have, uh, because you're underwater, right? You're facing the water. Are, are your speakers facing the water or are they facing your residence?
They're facing the water. And they are only like, they're not commercial speakers, to be honest. They're only small. I know some speakers can be small and very powerful. They're not very powerful whatsoever.
Okay, I mean, I, I live on the water over there, and I can hear the music from NAP's Landing. I'm one of those people that, you know, I like the music. Frank Sinatra shows up sometime and plays that kind of music, but I'm just concerned about anything louder and, uh, maybe not as pleasant and mellow. Uh, but it's important where those speakers face, because-
Face the water.
If they're facing away from people, it, it, you'll, you'll cut a break to the people that way, to some extent. Um, and again, this is all about the, the music and the loudness, and it is a residential area still, uh, and I take it the prior business that was there, the prior restaurant, didn't play music on the patio?
There was no speakers when I got there, so I presume no.
So this will be a new experience to those people that live in that general area, so we'll have to keep that in mind. No more questions, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Paul. Mr. Roguskas?
A couple of questions. Um, you're talking about the speakers you have there. A lot of times musicians will bring their own amplification, um, will you allow them to use those, or will you want them to plug into your speakers and be limited that way?
My system is not geared up for somebody to plug in. As I said, they're not really commercial speakers, they're just like house speakers, so they'd be, basically bring their amp and speaker.
Okay, so the speakers that we've just been talking about aren't really relevant to this discussion, because they're not going to be where the music's coming out of?
Well, as far as I know, I'm not even allowed to play those speakers right now, just even easy-listening music. So they'll be playing like, all the time when we're open.
Okay.
So it is a little bit relevant, but-
Right, but as far as the bands, won't be-
Like, I was standing on the patio, and we turned on the speakers, and I'm having a conversation with someone, and I can't hear the music in the background, so I think you're dead right, I think those speakers aren't really relevant, I think it's when we have an acoustic band is the problem.
Okay, so then, to get back to what Commissioner Paul was trying to get at, when the band is playing, which way are their amps and speakers going to be facing? Will they, will the band basically have their back to your building and be playing out, or will they be playing?
The band would be with their back to my building, playing out to the sea.
Okay.
So the speakers would be facing the sea.
Um, when you did start playing music, did you get complaints from the neighbors, or did they just go to the town and the town came to you, or?
Um, well, how, how I was aware of it was, I got a call from economic development to say that zoning had got a complaint that somebody complained about music.
Okay, so nobody ever called you and said, hey, can you turn it down?
No.
How would you respond if you've got a band playing and you get a call from a neighbor that says, you know, it's, it's a little bit louder than?
Well, what I, what I tried to do when I went to zoning was, I, I tried to see, is there any way we can find out who's complaining? Can we sit down and can we work it out, or can we figure out what's a good way to do this? Because like, Lordship is a very like, uh, it's kind of a, it's kind of its own little community, so I have like, I, I think, I probably have 75% of the people that love the clips-on-music on a Sunday, and then you might have some people that are like, no, I don't want that here, it's bringing different people here, it's like, you know, so you're always going to get that in any community.
Right.
So I was trying to see with the economic development if we could sit down with whoever ordered Lordship community or whatever, and sit down, what do you want from me? Because that's the only way you're ever going to fix it, you know, if, if both people can come to an agreement, and, you know, if not, that's why I'm here, because I don't know what else to do. I have to go to zoning, if you guys approve it, I go ahead, I play my music. If I get a complaint, I, I want, it, I found, you get a lot more with sugar than you do with salt, so if you be nice to people-
Right.
You know, you can say to them, listen, I'll turn it down for you, you know? You can help people a lot, but there comes a time, there is always a certain amount of people that you'll never satisfy, but-
That's true.
You know, you try, you, you know, I want to be neighborly, I don't want to, you know?
And there is, you were talking about a group, there is a great group called, called the Lordship Improvement Association, and that would probably be a good group for you to make a, uh, relationship with if you haven't already.
Yeah, some of them have made themselves known to me, and they love what we're doing there, they love the family restaurant, they like everything about it, you know? The police department have been great with me, you know, they called me directly, they said, listen, we had a problem last night, there was people parked everywhere, you know? It got very busy, I was like, I know, we got really busy. So I went out and I bought cones to make sure they didn't park on my neighbor's lawn, you know what I mean? Stop that.
Right.
And I, I've had a good response from both sides, the neighbor on, I don't re, I only have one neighbor, which is like weird, because the lot beside me is vacant, I believe it's approved for three units-
Right.
But it's a vacant lot.
Mm-huh.
And across from that is Maribel's-
Right.
Which is another restaurant. And in front of me, I have the ocean, and then on this side, I don't have anything, so it's kind of somebody on the back, you know? That's the only neighbor that I really have bordering my property.
Sure.
But, you know, it depends on which way the wind is blowing, it's the ocean, so.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Commissioner.
Thank you, Mr. Roguskas. Mr. Paul?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just had one more question that just came to mind. Uh, because it's an outdoor event, when you're playing music, I take it this is only going to be for June, July, August?
Yeah, I probably have only four more weeks, weather permitting, you know what it's like, so. It's my first year down there, so I'll be honest with you, I'm going to try and use the patio as much as I can, because that's where my, most of my revenue comes, I'm sure in the winter when there's snow down there, and I'm definitely not going to be playing music outside, that's not going to be a problem, but yeah, it's probably going to be August, September, I'd say, will be done.
And, and with the, if there was a compromise, I don't know if you had any dialogue with any of the neighbors, but, uh, would a 9:00 PM, would the music be more accommodating for the neighbors? I don't even know if there's an issue yet, but, uh, maybe sometimes 9:00 might be more bearable than 10:00, so are you flexible in your adjustment of time?
Exactly as I said, absolutely. Like, i- if somebody had have came to me and complained and said, listen, I got a kid, he goes to bed at 9:00 or whatever, I'd say, no problem, I'll have the band from 6:00 to 8:00, we're done, you know?
Okay, no more questions.
Thank you, Mr. Paul. Mr. Fuller?
Uh, yeah, it's not so much a question, but just kind of like, some case history from pre, uh, other examples where we had restaurants with some music in, in or near residential zones. Perfect example was the Windmill, uh, we gave them a one-year probationary period. Um, since then, everything was fine, and then the commission granted it full, like, outdoor seating and with some conditions on the music playing inside and, you know, some stuff like that too, so that's another option-
Mm-hmm.
The commission could take as well, to get kind of, to grant it a one-year probationary period.
Stipulation option, you have anything, Mr. Roguskas?
I'm all set.
Uh, to add on to that, that's a good, Mr. Paul? You're fine with that? All right then, well, thank you so much.
Okay.
We're done with no more questions, everybody answering it, asked all the ones I had. All right.
All right, thank you.
Yep, okay, is, uh, is there anybody here for the petitioner? Anybody here to speak in favor of this petition? Okay, anybody here to speak in opposition of this petition? Hello, step forward and please state your name and address, please.
Hi, my name is Kathy Lagnow, I live at 3 Jefferson Street in Stratford in Lordship, uh, which is at the corner of West Hillside and the beginning of Jefferson. Um, the Krabby Dog is a very nice place, run by very nice people. However, there is no guarantee that they will manage or own this restaurant one year, two years, three years, from today or tomorrow, which means many of the guarantees that were given here tonight, although they were given in good faith, the next person may not adhere to them. Adding music means adding more people. There's not enough parking now for their customers. Adding music will just attract more autos, more noise, more pollution, and more trash. The music is disturbing our peaceful and quiet enjoyment of our homes. When the wind blows, the music will carry to our homes, and the quietness of the beach and the serenity of the beach is disturbed. Additionally, my question in regard to the timing of the music is, how can you reconcile with the closing of the seawall at 10:00 PM when the police have to come in at 10:00 PM to close the seawall? If the music doesn't stop till 10:00 PM and it's going to take another hour for the people to get out, how do you reconcile those two different times? Because there is an ordinance that demands that the seawall is closed at 10:00. The police are there continually, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday. This is costing the taxpayers a great deal of money. Adding more music will just draw more people to the, to the restaurant. At this point, they cannot handle all the customers that come through the door. Restaurant parking is the, from the beginning of Jefferson Street all the way up to Ocean, and on First, all the way up to Ocean, on West Hillside, on West Hillside, the street gets blocked, because people start, uh, park on both sides of the car. If an emergency vehicle would have to get through there, it wouldn't be able to get through there. I've witnessed people sitting on the wall, listening to the music that they've played in the past, and they sit there, and now, the last few times I've been by there, they come bring their coolers and they sit there and they drink on the wall, listening to, to, um, the music. And I am sure that's not Krabby Dog's fault, but this is the type of thing that happens when you have this type of situation. Trash cans overflow, it creates a public health and safety issue. I worked with Beth DePonte to get more trash cans down there, although it helps, it has helped, it becomes the gathering area during the night and the trash cans overflow the next day, and myself and other neighbors, we go out there and have to pick up the trash. I personally pick up the trash on Mondays. I go out there, takes me an hour, I clean from the first walkway up to the second walkway with my little broom, and I pick- and I pick them up and I throw it in the trash. The quality of life for our local residents has been negatively impacted, and we do not want to see it increase anymore. Please go down there on a Friday, go down there on a Saturday night before you approve this and witness and see what I'm talking about. Once you go down there and you sit there and you see what's going on, you'll understand what I'm talking about. It negatively impacts our neighborhood, and I would really request that you not make a decision on this tonight. Just look at it, then maybe talk to see if there's some way to reconcile it. They're very nice people that run the place, but there is no guarantee. And if you allow this to happen, you are setting a precedent for any restaurant that comes in there. That would mean that tomorrow, Marnecks could come in here, they could ask for it, and you're going to have battling dance, which is just going to make things even worse. So please, please go down there and take a look at what I'm talking about. Thanks.
Okay, is there anybody else that would like to speak in opposition of this applicant? Anybody else? Okay, hearing none. Uh, we need a motion in order to close this, please. Mr. Fuller?
Point of order before we make a motion to close?
Seconded by...
No, 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 point, point of order.
Point of order.
Usually it's customary to have the petitioner come back to the podium if they want to address any testimony if they want to verify.
Absolutely, thank you. Absolutely. Come forward, please.
So just to address some, some of the issues that were brought up there, but, um, I would be quite willing to, if the restaurant should change hands, give back the allowing of playing music. But I've signed the lease for fifteen years. I own two restaurants in Stratford, so I'm heavily invested in Stratford. So I'm going to be around for a long time. But if for some reason, somebody came in and offered me so much money that I couldn't say no, I would be willing to, everything that I said I would do, whether it be stopping the music at nine PM or ten PM, whatever the commission decide, or whatever we discussed and I said that I would personally stand behind, that can all be taken away if I was to sell the restaurant. So that, our one concern on that is, it's up to you guys. You can take it right away if I decide to sell the restaurant. Um, as regards come down and have a look on a Friday and Saturday night, I encourage you, you know? It's, it's beautiful. You have a view of the ocean, beautiful patio. It's really nice. Are we busy and crazy busy? Absolutely. Unfortunately, when you get good food and a good restaurant underwater and you have a beautiful day, it's going to be busy. And people will park everywhere, and I try, and I try and do everything. We have a busboy sweep all around our, our, our property every morning, you know? Um, is there people coming with a cooler to watch a band? I don't know. I haven't witnessed it, but I'm not saying it didn't happen. Maybe it did. But that's public property, and I can't stop somebody, no more than I can go over and tell the guys that are fishing off there, "You can't fish there," you know? It's just, I can only look after my own area. I'm willing to sit down with any resident and come up with a plan, or if, if, if she thinks the garbage is overflowing every Monday morning, I'll gladly empty the two garbage cans in front of my restaurant. I'll put them in the dumpster every Monday morning, if that's what it takes. I have no problem with addressing anything or sitting down. All I want to do is, it was a very, um, it was there for nine years, and I believe I was never there. It wasn't a very successful restaurant, and it wasn't good for the area, and it was a sleeping restaurant. Now you have something vibrant that are bringing families, young people to the area, like, it's great. You got to come and experience it, and, and I say come and experience it, and then if that's what you want to do, decide after that, I'm fine with that. But I will address any issue, and if the commission say, "No, it's not feasible down there." But I don't think music is going to add anything else, only a nice ambiance, to somebody having dinner on the patio. I don't think it's going to bring any extra garbage to the area. I don't think it's going to bring any extra cars to the area. I can only fit so many people. So when I have a two-piece band on that patio, we don't have, it's not like we take out the tables and chairs and we have a dance. It's basically clip some music to the twenty-four seats that are there. I can't put an extra forty there if I have a band. And I actually lose a table if I put the two-piece band in. So I don't think it's going to add anything with parking whatsoever. My restaurant can only hold so many people, and that's all I can hold. Whether we play music or not has no bearing on the amount of people in the restaurant or the parking. The garbage, it has no bearing on. The only bearing it has is the noise. So that's the only thing I can say, but whatever you decide. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Paul?
Uh, you might as well stay up there. I have some questions for you.
Sorry, Mr. Paul.
What day of the week are you playing music? Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, to my understanding?
Yes, usually Sunday during the day because it's usually dead by eight PM on a Sunday night, you know? People go back to work Monday. So we usually do like music from three to five, two to four, four to six, whatever. We only do it once, so it's not, I do it all those times, but depending on the band, I book them in for, it's usually a two-hour slot.
How long have you been open?
Uh, we open on May sixteenth.
It seems to me that there's as much an issue with parking and trash as there is with music. Matter of fact, it almost sounded like music was the third element of problems, and the biggest element of problems is your parking issues and the trash issue. And I guess I'm questioning, or since May, have you done anything to resolve those issues that can accommodate the neighborhood to this, to this point where maybe if they see you fixed those issues, then maybe there's a little wiggle room for them to accommodate you on the music?
Well, unfortunately, I'd love to. I'd love to. If I could get parking, believe me, it'd be the first thing I could do. If I could buy the lot next door, if I could afford it, turn it into a parking lot and put meter parking in, I'd do it. There's only so many parking spots, and unfortunately, it's not metered. It's public parking, so it's first come, first served. So right now, today, or maybe, let's not take today, um, when was I there? I was there on Sunday. So when I got there on Sunday at eleven AM, the whole seawall, uh, we say the fifty parking spots from Marnecks to up Guba, I'd say there was four left, and my restaurant wasn't even open. Everybody was fishing. It was a beautiful morning. It's public parking. So I don't think, you know, what, to answer your question, for me to fix the parking, I can't. I would suggest maybe meter parking. Would that stop people from parking there and going walking over to Shore Beach? Maybe. Maybe not, but there's only so much parking there, you know, and it's public parking, you know? I can't, you know?
Just a comment. I mean, the good news is that you're doing a good business over there, it seems, so I'm glad for that.
That's me too.
Um, I, I don't think, well, maybe I'm wrong, but it seems as though there's, the music element isn't a must-have, it's a nice-to-have because you're doing well in, in the business that you're offering already with the food and the atmosphere?
If you don't approve it, will I close down? Absolutely not. No, I will not. It's going to just add to the ambience there on the patio. That's, that's all it will do, basically, you know? And like, I've spoke to people that were there and love it. They're like, "How can somebody complain about this? It's beautiful. You're playing clip some music, a two-piece band looking out on the ocean, drinking a margarita." You know, and getting back to your garbage thing, the garbage cans? No one from my restaurant puts garbage in the public garbage cans. Do people empty their cars, pull up, put stuff in? The fishermen put stuff in? Nobody walks out from my restaurant with garbage in their hand and puts it in that garbage can. That's a guarantee. It does, just doesn't happen, you know? But it is the seawall, and thank God, it's free to everyone that's public and wants to go there and sit on the wall with their families or get an ice cream from Marnecks and sit there, and the garbage cans are going to get full on a busy Saturday, Sunday. Absolutely they are, you know? Of course, you know, it's busy down there. It's beautiful, but it's busy.
Okay, well, no more questions. Thank you.
Anybody else, any question?
Uh, Mr. Raguskas. You're open now usually until eleven or so?
Well, our liquor permit says we can open until the state law, which is one-thirty in the morning. We haven't been open ever until then. Uh, usually, me and my partner just had a meeting about this. We're probably going to just start closing at eleven because we noticed the manager does his final printout report every night at eleven oh seven, eleven oh eleven. So it's usually all within fifteen minutes before or after. There's nobody down there after that.
Um, because it was a good point about the parking, which after ten PM, the seawall's supposed to be cleared. Are your customers then made aware of that, so if they're staying there till after ten but before eleven, they have parked somewhere else? Or is that an ongoing issue that there are people parked at the seawall when they're, they're not supposed to?
I would say, as I said, by ten PM, it's a big family restaurant. A lot of people, if they go there with kids, they're gone home long before that.
So I know.
You know, so it's like, um, has I, I, I think the police have helped me a little bit. I won't, I won't, I won't use the word turn a blind eye, but they have definitely made it aware to me, "Tell your guests that by ten PM, we're going to close the seawall. We don't want them hanging around," you know what I mean? If somebody's picking up food, I don't think they're going to give them a ticket, but if they're hanging out in their cars or sitting on their cars, they're moved along right away. Cops are pretty good at that, but...
One thing you had indicated before you would be open to, because if you have music that's playing until ten o'clock, that's going to be more of an issue. Would you agree to, on the Fridays and Saturdays, have the music go to seven, from seven to nine?
Absolutely.
Okay, I think that would solve that problem.
Yeah.
Okay, that's all.
Thank you, Mr. Raguskas. Anybody else have any more questions? Alrighty.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, try this one more time. Hearing that there is no more, make a motion to close this?
I'll move. I'll second.
Seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Passes unanimously. All right, let's make a motion, I guess, to close the public hearing?
Still moved.
Seconded by...
Mr. Chairman, maybe I missed it, but did you do anything with the first three items?
There, uh, the first one is withdrawn, the next one is withdrawn, and number two is continued. Attorney Florrick, I'm sorry I didn't remind you earlier.
Okay.
Excuse me. Yeah.
Yeah, they were postponed or continued from...
And Steve made the second, I think. Uh, Dave, Mr. Fuller made the, uh... Okay, do you want to take a short break before?
Oh, we should probably, we should, we should formally vote to adjourn it.
I thought I did that already. All right, all in favor of closing?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, passes unanimously. All right, you want to take a short break before we go into admin?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. All set here, uh, commissioners?
All set.
Okay. All right, uh, let it be known at twenty-eleven, oh, wait a minute. I'm on, oh, military time still. Eight, eleven, the administration session will be starting. First of all, I'd like to, uh, motion this forward to take some stuff out of order. I'd like to do the approval of the minutes, to get that approved, and then have Attorney Jackson come up and speak.
Oh, yes, I'll, I'll make a motion to waive the rules to take, uh, in the administrative agenda, the other work items. First Agenda Item One, the approval of minutes for June twenty-seventh, two thousand seventeen.
Okay, do I get a second? Seconded by Mr. Raguskas. Mr. Paul, I see you have something to say?
I have a question. At least, I'm looking at the June twenty-seventh, uh, approval of minutes. Uh, it looks like, uh, number three on the, I don't know, maybe I'm looking at the wrong thing, but the campsite plan review is number three?
On Ferry, uh, that's can't, that's not even coming up at all with us tonight.
Right, but this is the minutes I'm talking about. It, it looks like three and, uh, and six showing two different number of units under the approval of minutes for June twenty-seventh. I don't know if I'm looking at the right place.
You're, uh, completely right.
It should be one-nineteen consistently.
Yes, it should be one-nineteen on the number six.
Number six needs to be corrected to nine, to one-nineteen. Yes, the approval of minutes.
No, Joe,
Yeah.
item number one is the approval of minutes, but each one of these, I believe, is a separate item on the agenda, on the administrative, uh, session agenda.
Okay, that's why I thought I was looking at the wrong thing.
But you're absolutely right. Number six is a typo and needs to be corrected.
Okay, I didn't know where we should address that, wherever it should go, so.
Yeah, that's, that's not necessarily part of the minutes of, of July twenty-nine, I mean twenty-seventh.
Okay. So, however we do it, we should just correct that, that's all, for the records.
Um, since, it's, I gather it's a continuing agenda item because it's a, a petition that's currently tabled. So I guess moving forward, future agendas should reflect one-nineteen as opposed to nineteen.
I'm fine with that.
All right, so we, uh, had a second for the approval of minutes. Can, uh... To wait, we didn't do that yet? Okay. All right, all in favor to waive the rules?
Aye.
Aye, pass it. All right, so can we, uh, get approval of the minutes from June twenty-seventh, two thousand seventeen?
Uh, still moved. Obviously, anyone has any edits?
Seconded by Mr. Raguskas, uh, put forth by Mr. Fuller. All right, I'd like to, uh, move this forward to take out order for... Take a vote for that? Yep. Do we all in favor of that?
Aye.
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 That passes unanimously.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to waive the rules throughout other work, uh, item, Agenda Point Two, Discussion Reconsider of Extension Granted by Zoning Commission for, uh, the properties on Ferry Boulevard and Husatonic Avenue is the reason why Attorney Jackson's here today.
That's what I wanted to do. Thank you. Do I get a second for that? Mr. Raguskas? Attorney Jackson?
Good evening, everybody.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, passing unanimously. You're up now.
I'm up now, okay. So, uh, I'd given a memo. Jay Havansky and I had gotten a call. There is a, you had approved a, um, an extension of an approval for nine forty-six Ferry Boulevard and eight seventy-six Husatonic Avenue. It came to us where the owner of the property had contacted us and said they had not extend, had not consented to the extension. Now, the circumstances are a little confusing. The property was owned initially by the person who made the application, then not, and then back again. So at the time of the second extension, which was December of two thousand sixteen, the applicant before you asking for the extension did not in fact own it. They were a potential contract purchaser. They were a lien holder. But the, the actual property owner contacted us and specifically said they did not consent to it. Now, they were in a litigation matter and they were negotiating, but Mr. Havansky wanted me to come before you and say, would your extension in December, on December nineteenth, two thousand sixteen have been materially different if you'd known that the owner of the property at that time did not consent to the extension?
I'll, I'll take the first stab at that, if it's okay with you, Mr. Chair.
Absolutely.
Uh, if the property owner would not want an extension, I don't know why the commission would then grant an extension. Uh, it was presented to us that the, uh, petitioner at the time was a duly, um, appointed designee of that property. Whether that justifies their ownership or validates their ownership or not is, I don't know if that's really up to the commission to, to verify. Maybe, maybe staff of some, uh, type to kind of validate in the application. But, um, it would change my opinion of it. If, if the true owner does not want something, I don't know why the commission would approve something.
Well, if I may, some of the law on this subject is that the person who is standing to make the application has to have a reasonable contact with the property. So a contract purchaser will come before you, or perhaps somebody who has a vested interest in the property. Now, this was a second mortgage holder who is applying, and the argument on their part was that they wanted to continue to have the value of the extended approvals to, to protect their, their mortgage interest. The letters were produced for you, uh, they did indicate in the December fifteenth letter asking for the extension, uh, the firm of Green and Gross indicated that they had a present interest in the development of the property but cannot yet move forward with it because it's still in the process of acquiring title to complete the development parcel. but cannot yet move forward with it because it's still in the process of acquiring title to complete the development parcel. So they were in the process of acquiring title, they hadn't acquired it. I just, we wanted to bring it, Mr. Habansky and I wanted to bring it to the commission's attention that at that moment in time, or at least the current owner had said they didn't approve, and if that would change your, if that would change your decision, then you should reflect that.
It's, it's tough, but it also sounds like it's really a private dispute between the owner and the second mortgage entity.
It does sound like it.
Yeah, so I don't know where the commission would ultimately come into play with this. Uh, I, I don't want the commission to interfere between two, a private dispute.
Well, we didn't want it either, but we also thought it was your decision. We wanted you to say, okay, we made a decision if, if, that the current owner wasn't given notice, according to the current owner. So I don't, I, I can't speak for them. According to the current owner, they were not given notice of the December 2016 decision to extend it because they weren't the applicant. So they're coming back later in a private dispute. There is a litigation matter pending on this, and I think I gave you the site of that in the notes I gave you. There is a, a pending litigation matter, CV 156048801, in which there was a question of the second mortgage holder foreclosing and wanting to retain the approvals for the purpose of retaining value in the property.
So what does it actually do for the December decision the commission rendered?
Well, if the, if, if it would be material to the decision, yet in hindsight that the actual owner did not know that the mortgage holder was asking for a continuation of the approval, then you might change your decision. If you say that the mortgage holder potentially, and now actually, the, the party that made that action is now currently the owner of the 876 Husatonic Avenue parcel, if you say that the fact that the current owner did not know about the extension request would not have been material to the decision, then your decision can stand. If you say, no, it would have been material to our decision, then you might not, you might wanna revisit that decision.
Hmm.
It was Mr. Habansky's desire to just make sure the board was aware of this conflict.
That's a conundrum I have way, because you do have two entities that do have some sort of, um, connection to the property, so...
Correct. And your zoning regulations don't specifically note whether or not the owner has to agree to the extension. It just, and this case law says you have to have some connection to the property, and they describe some, but it's a fairly loosely defined connection.
Hmm, with that being said, is... You all set, Mr. Fuller? Mr. Paul?
Yeah. Mr. Chair, thank you. Um, I, I hear what you're saying, but, um, because it's entwined with some legal issues at this time as well, I'd like to defer some of the advice to our legal counsel before we make any decisions on this issue.
Well, even if it's appropriate to make a decision.
Yeah.
Well, I can tell you that there is case law that defines the question between, uh, who has the right to bring the action, and you, you as the board can say that the person who is a potential, a current owner but who is not an owner at the time of the application could have standing if you chose to do it. If you said to me that, that you were, that, that the fact that the, kind of, now, a year later, that the current owner is telling you that they didn't agree, but in the context of a legal matter, that might matter to you or not. I just, Mr. Habansky and I just wanted to bring it to your attention because we didn't, it wasn't his decision to make as to whether or not what your decision would be. And there is, I think, in the mo, in the, in the file, there is a memo citing the case law, if you want it, or actual case law.
Yeah. Now, I just wanted to also ask, um, the original owner, were they aware of the hearing for the extension?
If you believe the contact I had from their attorney, they were not aware of the hearing.
Because my next question would have been, why wasn't he here?
Say again?
Is that my next question would have been, why wasn't he here?
Well, and that's, that's what their argument is. Their attorney, which is Attorney Pike, said they didn't make the application, which was made by Green and Gross. They would not have been aware of the hearing because it was an administrative hearing on an extension, so they're arguing they weren't aware of it. Now, I should note that is part of that litigation matter that the, uh, Harborside, which is the entity, has filed bankruptcy, so this may be held for another day. And you did give an extension for, of that approval, I believe, until 2018. Uh, yeah, till June of 2018, so this will come up before the commi, the commission again.
No more questions, Mr. Paul? Mr. Raguskas?
Well, let me take a shot at it here. It sounds like we would have several decisions in front of us. One, if we decided that this information could have changed the decision made in December. And then, what would happen? Would we be reopening their application for an extension and hearing it again and making a new decision?
That would be a question for you, but I would then say, if you reopened it, the, the entity that asked for the extension is now the owner of one of the properties. They just were not the owner at the time of the extension. So it begs a bunch of questions. But your, our regulations, the town stratags regulations, don't specifically require the owner's approval, and yet it makes a certain amount of sense that the owner of a property should have the rights to say who controls their property. So we came before you because we looked at it and said, case law is kind of open-ended if you have a, any interest. And they were a second mortgage holder, so they have potentially an interest based on their mortgage holder. But if, 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 if they came before you and the owner of the property said, I object to this, but the second mortgage holder said, I want to grant this, have this extension granted for the purposes of protecting my equity, you might have had a harder decision in December. So to answer your question, if the fact that they did not own it at the time but do own it now would have been, is material. If you said, no, it's a point in time, if it's, if at the point in time where the application was made and we made a decision, they didn't own it, and were only a mortgage holder, and if that would be material to your decision, then I might suggest you reopen it and have a new hearing and start again, except that the old application would have expired and you would have, I don't know if that's opening up a new can of worms.
Yeah, that's, that's the big question there. What, if the commission were to take either not, and non-action is an action. Inaction is an action as well. Whether inaction or a new action, would the commission open itself up or the town up to any sort of litigation?
Well, I think if the town, i- if you decide that in, at the time of the hearing in December of 2016, that it would have been material that the only, that the applicant before you was merely a mortgage holder, and he, and his letter from 2015 does reflect that he is a mortgage holder in the process of a foreclosure, then, then if you say, I would have, I wouldn't have granted that at the time, then we'd have to look at the legal ramifications of reopening it and whether we could have a new hearing or whether there was some other action to be taken. If, on the other hand, the board says, we, you know, we wish to have going forward notice of the, uh, individual owner's consent to the, the applications, but that we accept the fact that the, at the time, the owner was a mortgage, or the person asking for the extension was a mortgage holder and is now the owner of one of the properties, and therefore we will allow that to stand, we can allow that order to stand. We just didn't, Mr. Habansky and I didn't want you to not understand that facts have come to light after the fact that might or might not affected your decision at the moment.
It's very hard to separate past from present now because we now have a situation where someone was in the process of acquiring the property for foreclosure, and now at present day, they acquire at least some property or some portion of property.
They own one of the parcels and are foreclosing on the other as a second mortgage holder.
So it, it could also very well become a moot point. They, the, the applicant in time could very well be the full owner of the property in which they sought the extension.
That's totally true.
Mr. Paul?
I just have one other concern and question in regards the, uh, the relationship and the contractual agreement between the owner and the forecloser of the property. Was there anything contractually between the two in writing that could have justified why the foreclosing entity came in to ask for an extension? We don't know that.
I, I don't know that, but I would say that a general term in a commercial mortgage would be the ability to protect the property. So if they'd made an application to you as the mortgage holder and said, we're trying to protect the equity in the property, which was, if, if presumably if the approval expired, the property value would go down. So if they'd come to you and said, we are a mortgage holder and we wanna protect the value of the property, you might have responded. The owner said that they, that they felt that Mr., that Green and Gross, the firm, that any of the application wasn't clear. But I gave you the sections from the letter. He does say in there that he is in the process of foreclosure. So I don't think he misrepresented himself to you, but I also think that it might have been helpful if you'd known that the property owner had an opinion on the subject. Now, the property owner doesn't, didn't bring it up until just this, in June, so it had been six months since the approval had been done. But again, we don't want you to go make decisions without all the facts.
This sounds like a private dispute, and I'd rather leave it to the private entities.
Mr. Raguskas?
Um, I liked Attorney Jackson's suggestion. Um, I think that going forward, if there's a case like this that somebody who's got an interest and is allowed to ask for the extension, but there are other owners involved, that the other owners should at least be made aware that that extension is being requested and give them the opportunity to respond. But this particular case just sounds like nothing, if, if we closed it now and reopened it, nothing would change, so...
That's, and that's a fine result. I just, we just didn't want you to-
Right.
-not understand, and we wanted the record to reflect what, what the current owner had contacted us, but I agree that at some point, there's nothing to be done. However, I didn't want the current owner to feel that we weren't at least acknowledging their concerns.
That's fair.
And, and weren't you saying just before too that without that extension, the value would have went down too, regardless of who?
Arguably, if the extension expired, I would think that there'd be a result. And, and to the extent, when I spoke to the attorney for Green and Gross, the attorney making the application, his argument is, I'm a second mortgage holder, that without that applicant, without that approval, arguably the property is worth less and therefore his mortgage is unsecured. And the statutes do allow there to be, you know, don't just define an owner as the current title owner. They define somebody having to have an interest in the property.
Mr. Fuller?
Uh, Mr. Chair, you actually, you raised a very interesting point about the protection of the property value. And thinking about that and just some recent comments by Attorney Jackson, um, citing statutes where you don't have to be just the title owner, you, you could have some other interest in the property, such as a just second mortgage holder or, or some other group that has some sort of claim to the property. I think with those two factors in mind, I would not have changed my decision, thinking of those two factors right now. One, with the point you just raised, the property value being protected, that benefits both the current or past owner and the, the entity that's going for the foreclosure process, uh, process now. I would also argue this point, enhanced property values also is of public interest. Uh, it's beautification of the town, defense of other property values in the neighborhood, increased tax base. Uh, you, you go for the whole gambit of economic development for that. So I think there is also, I think, with that regard, I think I would not have reversed my decision, thinking of these two major points right here, the state statutes that allow for, um, any sort of mortgage holder or other interest that, to also be considered material interest to the property.
I concur. Mr. Paul, do you have anything you wanna say on this?
Uh, no.
I see the wheels turning over there.
Yeah, well, it, it, to me, it's, uh, it seems as though it's a, it's a legal issue at this point in time. I, I don't think the commission would change their mind. I think it needs to be ironed out by the, uh, the legal entities at this point.
Attorney Jackson, if this just stays the way it is, I think I might have heard that somewhere, that the ramification with maybe legalness and everything shouldn't really be that bad, or maybe, I'm not saying that right, shouldn't be coming back to the town?
I think that if we leave it the way it is, I don't think we're doing any injustice. I think that we, but, but what, as I said, Mr. Habansky and I wanted you to understand that we were contacted after the fact by the owner indicating they hadn't been given notice. So to somebody's point, perhaps going forward, we'll have it, if you're not the legal owner of the property, you need to get the consent of the owner. Or define as a mortgage holder that you aren't able to get the consent so you can make the decision as the council, knowing that the current owner objects. But I'm not sure why a current owner would object to the continuation of a, an approval that theoretically benefits them. But again, we just wanted you to have all the information.
Yeah, and that was like its second, if I remember, I'm trying to remember.
That was the second extension.
Second, right?
That was the second. And the, the property owners were involved in the first one. They just, for some reason, after the fact, are objecting to the second one.
Is everybody getting along, though, through this?
No.
I wasn't gonna ask that, because it's none of my business, but I'm like, I was hoping there was no ramification over this.
There shouldn't be any ramifications to the town, because you took the information. The information in the letters asking, requesting it were accurate. You made your decision based on that. So nobody represent, misrepresented anything to the town, but the owner arguably said he didn't have notice. But if you were the second mortgage holder applying for an extension, the owner might or might not have noticed of it.
Okay, does anybody else have any more questions on this, please? No? Okay, so being that said, Attorney Jackson, I need to make a motion in order to close this? Any good one?
I don't know if we're actually taking any action, so I don't know if any votes required.
Well, you just, there's a question whether you want to reconsider. I would think if you don't, I don't know, John, you can tell me.
I was, I was under the impression that maybe we just wanted to get it to stay, well, we have to make up our mind to stay the way it is or go a different route, that's all.
Right. I, I, I think Attorney Jackson is right. If you, if you don't want to reconsider, there's, I don't think there's any need to take a formal vote on it. It just stays where it is, that's all.
And you'd be reconsidered, then you would vote.
So that means I would have to put forward if, uh, somebody would wanna, if the commissioners would wanna leave it the way it is? Right? Take no action?
That's fine.
Can I get? No? Everybody's fine with it? I, I just wanna, just a head nod or something? A grunt, a moan, I mean, you know, I've, I've, yes, Mr. Fuller, go ahead.
Should there be a point, say this litigation between private entities gets resolved, there may be something that might spur zoning commission activity in the future. So it could always be brought back to the board, that's, and if, if action is required of some kind.
Yeah, and I, I don't think, when this came up, I don't think we had that issue with what was just going back and forth at that time, even though we knew that there was extensions and extensions, but we didn't...
We, we were aware of a foreclosure process, and that's the reason why.
The letter did indicate there was a foreclosure process, and Mr. Habansky said he'd never had a situation where the owner objected to an extension. So being it out of, out of the ordinary, we thought we'd bring it to you to let you make-
Okay.
-decisions as, as the council does.
Alright, so it seems like everybody's in favor of just letting it ride, leaving it alone.
And you all have a nice evening.
And you have a better one.
Thank you, Attorney Jackson.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson, Attorney Jackson. Alrighty, so now, now we can run back. Are you talking about, uh, these three? Well, I was thinking the first one. Yeah, the first one is this, though. I don't know if you wanna jump, we should do it. No, wait a minute, this one. Yeah. Alright. So I'd like to get a motion to take the, uh, text amendment for Stratford Zoning Commission off the table here. Would somebody mind taking, doing that? Mr. Fuller?
And, uh, Mr. Paul had the second.
Okay. Discussion?
Uh, we need a vote to take it off the table.
Oh, I thought, uh...
Oh, wait, no, we don't, I'm sorry. My apologies.
I thought you did. I thought that's what it was. All in favor? I keep doing that. Aye, passes unanimously. Alright, discussion? Uh, I, I, I like the idea of just having, uh, have it go up in front of, uh, planning and zoning and if they can make an issue or make the decision, and if there's, uh, something that'll happen, they can come back to us and bring it up in front of us.
Yeah, I just would wanna stipulate, if it's not already in the verbiage, um, if it does come back to us, it's an administrative review first.
Yeah.
This way they don't have to go for the whole surveys and public hearings and legal notifications.
Right, let it go to, uh, Jay first in there in planning, and then if there's an issue or something, could come to us. Right, let it go to Jay first in there in Planning, and then if there's an issue or something, could come to us.
Also, I want to adopt the three Planning Commission stipulations about the trash receptacles, a hundred-foot radius, and a maximum of up to nine seats.
Yep.
Uh, yeah, I guess it's a motion to approve.
That's a motion. Can I get a second by Steve Roguszkas, seconded? All in favor?
Aye.
Approved unanimously. Okay. How about a motion to take the text amendment off the table on the Vietnam Palace?
So, move, Mr. Chair, can I make a recommendation that we do all three? Or does somebody have an issue with doing all three together?
I think it'd be prudent to vote them in separate, because once a text amendment, a zone change, and the site plan.
Okay.
Though, I mean, they all serve the same purpose in the end, but...
Right, okay. Then I will make a motion to take the text amendment of the Vietnam Palace LLC takeout restaurant in an LB zone off the table.
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Fuller. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, passes unanimously. Discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chair, this is a smart regulation. This is a good way to clean up the books. I'm very much in favor of this. And it also makes the town more business-friendly and adds to our food and culinary culture to the town. So, I'm in favor of this amendment.
Anybody else? Mr. Paul?
Yeah, I'm very much in favor of this amendment. I think it's, it's gonna be an enhancement for the town of Stratford. It's gonna improve the walking traffic and provide the commuters with someplace to go to eat.
Mr. Roguszkas.
It's basically correcting what seems like a mistake in zoning regulations, so let's get it right.
A little oversight, right? Yep. Yeah, I, I, I agree with everybody else there, so...
Motion to approve?
Motion to...
Second.
Right ahead of me. All in favor?
Aye. A motion to take 2501 Main Street off the table for TD Vietnam Palace, approval to establish full-service restaurant in an LB zone.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Paul. All in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, take me a while. Discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chair, this is a, this is a very rudimentary procedural step. This is them to apply for the zone we just created, or the text amendment we just created. So, this is, uh, this is a procedural matter. This, I'm in favor of this. You have to be in favor of the site plan to be in favor of this. And not to get ahead of myself, I, I am in favor of the site plan.
No, you're not getting ahead of yourself.
I'll make a motion to approve. I want us to discuss a discussion.
Seconded by Mr. Roguszkas.
Aye.
All in favor? Unanimous.
For record, I'm an aye.
All right, how about the last one on the Vietnamese Palace? Who wants to?
2501 Main Street.
I'll make a motion to take 2501 Main Street, TD Vietnam Palace, approval of a Class H restaurant, beer and wine permit in an LB zone off the table.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Mr. Fuller. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I think this is, this is a common sense. It's already established in the zone before we approved the zone to have this. It would not be fair to deny them, because you have the lazy dog right there with a much more intense liquor permit, which has full spirits and everything. Also, beer and wine is also very much a cultural libation to be consumed, not just in East Asian societies, but Latin American, European, and North American societies too. So, this is a common sense. I think it would add a lot of value to, to that shopping center.
I would agree with you too, Mr. Fuller. And plus, I think we'll make a little more history again tonight. We're getting rid of an oversight of a text amendment, something that was there that shouldn't have been there for this, so we won't have this come up again. All right.
Also, I think that's ultimately how you identify problems with the zoning regulations. Probably when this zone was established, whatever it was, thirty, forty, fifty years ago, LB zones are very different than what they are now. The business culture is very different than what it is now. It takes cases like these, real-world examples, to help us, guide us through amending the zoning regulations. So, I'd also want to applaud the applicant for being a, not just being a business owner in Stratford, but also contributing to Stratford Public Policy.
Very good. Okay.
Mr. Chair, I think this levels the playing field with all the other restaurants in the area. And it's very easy for me to approve this, so if there's no other comment, I'm making a motion to approve this amendment.
Second.
Seconded in by Mr. Roguszkas. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Okay. Somebody like to move forward on the next one would be Beach Drive?
I'll, I'll make a motion to take these, fourteen Beach Drive off the table.
Second.
Seconded in by Mr. Paul. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, this one here, I think we'll have just a little bit of a discussion on that, because I think we're gonna have just some stipulations for this. Does anybody want to go forward with that? I mean, you know, stipulations on hours. I know, I had the hours written down. I mean, you want to keep, you know, everything, go ahead, Mr. Fuller.
Mr. Chair, before I make a motion, I'll just discuss a couple of the stipulations, should we adopt this. One should be no later than nine o'clock or even eight o'clock, I'm not sure whatever people are comfortable with. And I would limit it to just Friday, Saturday, or Sunday. I wouldn't have it any other weeknight. I don't know, like, we can't really control, and it's really unfair to burden the petitioner. If people are drinking illegally on the seawall, that's not really the petitioner's problem. But I, I'm still wrestling with another idea to, if we allow this, then Marnecks is gonna want it.
Well...
And should it be a future establishment there ever be developed, they would have wanted to, to compete with each other. So, that, that's another thing we have to consider before we, we do go forward with this, is it might sound nice here, but if we allow it for one place and then deny it right across the street, it, you know, it could open up a couple cans of worms too. So, this is something we should take our time with.
Yes, I can agree with you on that. I also had that feeling on something else, we approved for a liquor permit a while back in an MA zone. And I was, you know, just not to go off tangent here, I was a little reluctant with that, Mr. Fuller, too, you know, because I thought that would do what you were just saying, you know? And it's a, it's a road, it's a fine line to draw here. I understand what you're saying. Mr. Paul?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, you know, I think the owner's working hard to really appease everybody and the neighbors and all that. He's doing his best to try and make accommodations to stay in business and have customers and not disturb the neighbors. But at the same time, what we have to do is be aware that there, there are some neighbors that are not gonna be very happy. Having said that, and having, and knowing Lordship, doesn't seem like a whole lot of people are upset, because Lordship would have had this room full if we had a major issue with this, with this piece of business. I, I think he's giving it his best shot. I'd like to have some kind of way, we can put some parameters on a, a way that we can, you know, put our feet in the water with this and see how it goes temporarily for a short period of time. And then, after we do that, we can do an assessment of what the results are. And if there's still loud noise against the business, we're gonna have to maybe reverse things a little bit.
Yeah, and it's a short season, but go ahead, Mr. Fuller.
Yeah, we've, we, the zoning commission has approved probationary periods for the first time around too. So, I don't know if a year would make sense, because that would put them halfway through summertime already. But we could maybe stipulate a six-month approval or to the end of calendar year 2017. So, the month of August and September would be kind of the probationary period. Or if, again, Indian summer in October, maybe it extends that a bit. But that might provide a little bit of a case study for us, for this board to make a decision sometime in 2018 on the permanent status of it.
Could you do that administratively the second time around, so he doesn't have...
Oh, yeah, I think it's been handled that way, too. My recollection of Windmill was precisely that. They had the public hearing for the outdoor seating and music and whatnot. And then the one-year probationary period ended, and it became an administrative vote. So, I think that would be a good, to repeat that sort of framework, just with, instead of a year, do it to like a half year or to the end of 2017.
So, you would be in favor of making one stipulation to come back in next 2018 in, I don't know, April or something, when they open, when people would want to be out there?
Before they would have music out there.
Yeah, I mean, before they would, go ahead, Mr. Paul.
I just want to make sure I heard this right. This probationary period, we're trying to make it an administrative review of the results of that trial period without any public comment.
Oh, that's true.
I think we need to have a public comment period.
Well, I think what would happen is I would get complaints in my office, which we would inform the commission about complaints, letters we received.
No, I'd rather have this become something where we keep the public involved to the point where we'll give them their ability to come in to this commission if there's issues. And we need to face this head-on, to hear these issues as representative of the people.
I, I see what you're saying.
I want them to have that platform to come in publicly in front of this commission.
But still continue on tonight, so we can get something going, so they could move forward.
Oh, absolutely.
Because they only have ex amount, but I understand.
Yeah, I'm only referring to after the trial period, there are the ones that are gonna give us the feedback, and I'd like that to be a public hearing for them.
I, I understand you now. Mr. Roguszkas?
Are there any drawbacks to doing the public hearing? Are there extra steps that the business owner has to go through?
Only, only expense-wise, I mean, it, it takes some effort to put in a full application, and the application fees are not cheap.
Okay.
He's probably gonna go next year, probably a thousand dollars for, you know, a, a full application, full special case application.
Well, that's because of the legal notices that has to get published in Connecticut Post.
What was that?
A lot of the overhead is the actual legal notice itself that goes out to the Connecticut Post.
Correct, that, that is the most, that is the expense. That's why I thought, as the zoning enforcement officer, I, I generally get all the, I, I know when there's a problem, because people call me, they call Jay. And certainly, if there was a problem, maybe at that point, you could, you could push it to a, a public hearing, you know, point.
That's fair.
Yeah, that's, I think that's the way how Windmill was handled. Zoning office would receive complaints. It did not receive complaints with a Windmill, or very minimal or minor ones, or we actually had people write letters in favor of it after initially opposing it. So, there was a scenario of the restaurant working with the neighborhood and winning their hearts and minds.
Yeah, I would be in favor of doing something like that. I'm not too crazy about what I just heard about having to have them go and it be another a thousand dollars. I mean, that's a lot of money to me. I mean, I, I don't want to force people out. I think we need to keep people in. I understand the fine line we have here, so... Mr. Roguszkas?
If we're just dealing with it on an administrative basis, are we able to ask for input from like the police department and...
Sure, I think so.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Because in case people didn't call you to complain, they, you know...
Oh, absolutely, we could get complaints from health department, police department, whatever department need be. We could, we could get that information to...
Yeah, and that was similar to the Windmill, where the zoning office forwarded kind of like a summary of what the complaints were, how many, yeah. I think that would be the appropriate way to go. If we feel that there were a lot of complaints, but didn't want to deny it, but wanted more public input, we could then at that point in time compel them to go to a public hearing.
Correct. Mr. Paul?
Are we empowering you then to take these comments, let's say, worst-case scenario, that, that people are really up in uproar about? Are we empowering you now to, let's say, go back to the owner and say that we're gonna have to shut down the music? Or are we gonna have to have another hearing anyway?
Oh, at this point, let's say you give him the approval tonight, and we get complaints?
Yep.
Based upon the approval? Based upon, let's say, music till eight or nine o'clock? I mean, i- if he's doing what, what he's supposed to be doing, if he's playing acoustic music and it's not too loud, and he's playing only till nine o'clock, I mean, I think he's being reasonable. You could have one individual that calls our office constantly, and is that a legitimate complaint? You know, I really don't know at that point. He's following what his approval is.
Right, what a scenario I'm painting is that if there's a large number of complaints...
Oh, if there's a large number of complaints...
And he's shutting the meeting down at nine o'clock, but there's still a large number of complaints, what are you empowered to do at that point?
Well, I think, I think that he would have to, he would have approval for this season, and he would have a problem getting approval for next season.
Okay, that, that, I just wanted a clarification on that whole scenario. Thank you.
I think if he followed what you, let's say you approved it tonight with certain conditions, and we still received a lot of complaints, but he followed the conditions, he would have a tough time next year getting a reapproval.
Thank you.
Okay, so, let's nail that down. We want to do the probation, just so we have that okay, right? And that would be what, for the calendar year till 2018?
It's a, it's a clear break, that's why I suggested it.
Yep, no, I, I agree with you, and I, and I think that till... Six months? Okay, so we can nail that down. The days would still be Friday, Saturday, and Sunday? We're, are we?
Up to nine P.M.
Up to nine P.M.?
Up nine P.M. on Friday and Saturday.
What was that?
Up to nine P.M. on Friday and Saturday. I think it should be six P.M. on Sunday, which is in line with what he was saying.
And what time, starting on Sa- Friday and Saturday? You're, you're saying do nine o'clock on Friday and Saturday? What time do you want them?
He was talking about two hours of music, so...
I have seven to nine or six to eight.
Right.
I was, I was kind of going with the six to eight, but I don't know if that's gonna be not long enough, early enough, because people will still be there, you know?
Especially on a Friday, that's very early.
So, you want to do the seven and nine on Friday and Saturday? Okay, then we'll get that part nailed down, and then, and then Sunday, four to six?
Yeah.
Do you want to add some other stipulations in there?
Any what?
Some additional stipulations, as far as the speakers pointing out towards the Long Island Sound.
Like, if he points them to Marnecks, then they won't need any music. They can share the music. Hey, I'm just trying to get along here, Attorney Fuller. What were you gonna, Mr. Fuller, go ahead, you had a...
Make the hermit crabs dance, Mr. Drayana.
What was that?
Make the hermit crabs dance. Fiddlers, too. Another one is just a reinforcement of cleanliness of the trash receptacles.
What would you like to do?
I just said it, reinforcement of making sure that the trash receptacles are well-maintained and emptied in a, in a reasonable manner.
Yeah, that's his, that's the...
The ones that he's responsible for.
The ones that he's responsible for, because he can't be respons...
Yeah, down the other end.
Yeah, I mean, at the seawall, right? I mean, nobody, just his, yes. Go ahead, Mr. Roguszkas, you had another?
No, he actually added in what I was about to say, so...
Mr. Paul?
I think we covered it, we're talking about, you know, keeping up with the trash as much as possible within his property, because he can't take care of outside of that. The hours of operation, we already identified. And basically aiming those speakers out to the ocean and hope that we don't get too much downwind.
Yeah, I mean, it's gonna be the acoustic guitar with an amp and maybe the bongos or something. I mean, they could get loud, they can't get loud. And you know what? Like you did, he's on a probation. John will get a complaint or something, and then it would just be worked out from there. Mr. Fuller?
Just a point of order for the, I mean, point of clarification, not point of order, for the probation. Is there a double secret probation?
Double secret probation?
I'll make a motion with the stipulations aforementioned.
Okay. All right, did, Mr. Chairman? Just so I can clarify... Mr. Chairman, just so I can clarify, um, so this is good for six months? What happens after six months?
He has to come back administratively unless I receive a lot of complaints and then the commission may opt to, to have a public hearing on it.
But Jay would be able to just move it forward without having us if there was no other issues. This way here is not gonna cost him all that, anything, I hope, right?
It comes back to the commission.
Administratively, no.
I know, I remember. That, is that it? Anybody have any other, did you think of anything else? I think you're all pretty well set and he's in good shape. All right, so, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, passes unanimously. What else did I forget? That's it? He's good. All right, we got that out of the way and the zoning. Anything under a zoning enforcement study? Complaints or anything?
Not that I, you know, we talk about a lot of music. I had a lot of complaints for, uh, the Doc Shopping Center, the music place, um, what's the name of that? Joey Sees, and we've been dealing with that music situation. The people in Milford have been quite upset with the music blasting till after twelve o'clock, but, um, after talking to the owner of the, um, shopping plaza and Joey Sees, we hope to have it under control for the rest of the summer, so...
Actually, you know, I was there the other day and it looks like he's got some kind of a, a wall, temporary wall up, so he's not really belting it across the river.
Correct, he was supposed to keep that sound wall up to help deaden the sound.
Yeah, but he's helping, he's doing his best he can.
He's, he's now trying. He wasn't at the beginning.
Oh, yeah. Very nice guy, though, I met him, he's very nice.
He's, he's... The commission gave him approval till midnight, which, you know, pushed it a little bit. Ten o'clock would have been certainly better, I think.
Yeah, just for the record, my office is doing some research on that because there's a disconnect between the ordinance, which talks about ten o'clock and the approval that this commission granted, which was till twelve o'clock. So, the question is what trumps what? Does the zoning regulation have to, uh, accede to the ordinance? Or who has the power to set that type of, um, restriction? We're in the midst of doing research on it.
Just a quick question to your doing for on that. Um, town council ultimately is a superior level of government to the zoning commission in most...
Well, within its jurisdiction, yeah.
Uh, so, I imagine, well, without the thorough legal knowledge, that the ordinance would ultimately, being a town law, effectively a town law, where zoning is more of an administrative...
Well, the zoning is a regulation, but I don't know that it's entirely clear that, um, that in this particular sphere, it's the legislative body as opposed to the zoning commission or vice versa. That's what we're trying to determine. I think there's an issue. In some areas, it's clear. Um, you know, the zoning commission could grant an approval for something that was on the agenda today uh, with a stipulation, um, that, uh, traffic be allowed to ingress and egress in both ways, but it's a one-way street. You, you certainly can't trump that. You don't have the power to do that. But it's a little less clear who governs with respect to this type of a, of a administration of a noise ordinance. I mean, I agree with you, Dave, but my, my gut feeling is that the council trumps, but we're, we're, we're trying to make sure that, uh, we could get to the bottom of that.
And then, the, the reason why I think that, because police could enforce ordinance, you could have police enforcement as opposed to someone violating a zoning regulation. That's more administrative enforcement that eventually makes its way up to the town attorney's office.
That's true, yeah.
Uh, and then my other one is you could probably have something compliant with that midnight cutoff but violate the local ordinance, so the police would then be called in to enforce the ten P.M. cutoff time. So, it might be a moot situation anyways.
That's very possible too, as a practical matter.
And actually, the police don't enforce the noise ordinance, the health department does.
Oh, wow.
Oh, did?
Yeah. Well, the police go out, probably tell you to be quiet, but actually...
Yeah, I mean, that's normally where the first, uh...
But the health department would have to go out there with decibel meters and, and do a, a little report and it, it becomes difficult.
For you, John, we were talking about this in my office today. Do the police have decibel monitors when they get called to the...
Not that I'm aware of, I think only the health department.
Only the health?
I mean, if the police will go out there, tell you to be quiet. I mean, that's, they don't, it, it really comes out of the health department if you read the ordinance.
Anything else on that? All set? Okay. Accessory apartment applications, anything? Okay. Sediment erosion controls out?
No.
Greenways out? Other items? Ah, medical marijuana on goal settings. I, I'm sure Mr. Fuller would be forward about this, uh, maybe... I think all the commissioners after the last meeting and everything is what I'm trying to get at is I think we needed to move this forward and I think it has to go to planning and zoning after that last meeting. I, I'm not sure Mr. Fuller will correct me on this.
There has to be a regulation to refer.
To get it, uh, to move forward so we can have them people want to do this, no? Okay. Okay, it, it went there and, uh, Mr. Abansky, uh, I'll, I'll just read this. I, I don't know if anybody, did anybody see this? It, it was, uh, "The status of research on medical marijuana regulations and the clinics. Mr. Abansky has prepared formal application and sent to the state and regional planning council of governments and a formal review will take place next month."
Okay, so it's in the queue, so something's happening.
Yeah, I was just trying to get that because I, from our last meeting, I was under the impression that we needed to get this moving forward after we went through this. It's only been three years and it's not more, right, Mr. Fuller?
Yeah, it's, it's, well, it sounds like it's in the queue now, so...
Okay.
Yeah.
So...
Getting the appropriate agency reviews.
All right, so, anybody have anything that they wanted to put in that? No? Mr. Paul, Mr. Raguskas, we're all set there? Uh, nothing on the methadone, uh, parking? Nope. Recommendations to town council? Hmm, nope. How about TOD? Send density considerations to planning commission for informal review? Mr. Fuller, do you have?
Uh, and all I know is that we did refer the, uh, the density adjustments to planning. I don't know if planning's still deliberating.
Wasn't that in the minutes?
Nothing's been referred back.
Nothing's coming back yet.
Well, that's section three of that five.
We've acted on everything that's come back to us.
He just had the concerns, that was, that was it? But he did, he did put it forth to, uh, planning. So, that's still in the queue. All right, so with that being said, guess what? Get a motion to adjourn?
So proudly, second.
Seconded by Mr. Fuller, put forward by Mr. Paul. Thank you, everybody.
Good job, Mark.